Good afternoon, everyone. I'd like to welcome everyone to the annual reorganizational meeting of the Board of County Commissioners, Open Public Meetings Act.
Adequate notice of this meeting of January 1st, 2022 was given in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act by forwarding the schedule of this reorganization meeting of the Board of County Commissioners to the Warren County Clerk, the Star Ledger and Daily Record, and by posting a copy thereof on the bulletin board in the office of the Board of County Commissioners.
Okay, next invocation by Judge Steinhardt, please.
Keep our heads, please. Lord, first, let me say thank you on behalf of all of us who are gathered here today to welcome another year. Thank you for your many and abundant blessings, for the gift of life, for the measure of health we need to fulfill our calling, for the food we eat, the friends we keep. Thank you for the ability to serve our communities and your greater good, and for the honor of bearing appropriate responsibilities. Lord, I ask that you bestow our leaders with the wisdom to govern in these difficult and often conflicting times, that when they have different opinions, give them unity of spirit, a sense of the welfare and need of our citizens, a passion for justice and rightness, the confidence to pursue them, the clarity to see them, and the strength and conviction to attain them. We ask that you bless this meeting, all who attend it, and all they serve. We ask these things in Christ's name. Amen.
Please rise. Pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, next, we have our county clerk, Holly Mackey. Please read the certification of election. James Kern.
Certificate of election, a statement of the determination of the Board of County Canvassers relative to an election held in the county of Warren on the second day of November in the year of our Lord 2021 for the election of county commissioner. The said Board does determine that the above-mentioned election, James R. Kern III, was elected by majorities, majority of votes cast. I do certify that the foregoing is a true and correct statement of the determination of the Board of Canvassers therein mentioned as relates to the office of county commissioner. In witness whereof, I have hereon to set my hand and cause the seal of the county of Warren to be affixed this 19th day of November in the year of our Lord 2021. It is signed by the chairman of the Board of County Canvassers, Charles Bodie, and attested to by myself, Holly Mackey, Warren County Clerk.
Thank you. Next, we're going to have the Honorable Tom Miller swear in. Mr. Kern?
I state your name.
I, James R. Kern III.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
And to the governments established.
And to the governments established.
In the United States.
In the United States.
And in this state.
And in this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
And that I will faithfully.
That I will faithfully.
Impartially.
Impartially.
And justly perform.
And justly perform.
The duties of the office of county commissioner.
The duties of the office of county commissioner.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
Thank you, Judge.
We have a roll call, please.
Ms. Chesla?
Here.
Mr. Sarnowski?
Here.
Mr. Kern?
Here.
Next, I need a motion to appoint director for the year 2022.
I would make a motion to appoint Jason Sarnowski to be director for the year 2022.
I second that motion.
Roll call.
Kern?
Yes.
Mr. Chesla?
Yes.
Mr. Sarnowski?
Yes.
Next, I need a resolution appointing Mr. Sarnowski as director of the Board.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Kern?
Yes.
Ms. Chesla?
Yes.
Mr. Sarnowski?
You're out, sir.
Right. At this time, Senator Darty come up.
Ready?
Yes, sir.
I, Jason J. Sarnowski.
I, Jason J. Sarnowski.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the same.
To the same.
And to the governments established in the United States.
And to the governments established in the United States.
And in this state.
And in this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
And that I will faithfully.
And that I will faithfully.
Impartially.
Impartially.
And justly.
And justly.
Perform all the duties of the office of commissioner-director.
Perform all the duties of the office of commissioner-director.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Oh, thank you, sir.
Director.
Yeah, thank you. Alex did a great job. At this point, we need a motion, or do we need a resolution to appoint, I'm sorry, you know, motion for deputy director of the Board of County Commissioners. Do we have a motion to appoint?
I would make a motion to appoint Lori Chesla as deputy director of the Board of County Commissioners.
I will second that motion. Discussion? Roll call?
Mr. Kern?
Yes.
Ms. Chesla?
Yes.
Mr. Sarnowski?
Yes.
Congratulations.
And at this time, we're going to have the Honorable Thomas Miller swear in, deputy director, Lori Chesla.
I state your name.
I, Lori Chesla.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
And to the governments established.
And to the governments established.
In the United States.
In the United States.
And in this state.
And in this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
And that I will faithfully.
And that I will faithfully.
Impartially.
Impartially.
And justly perform.
And justly perform.
All the duties of the office of county commissioner-deputy director.
All the duties of the office of county commissioner-deputy director.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God. Thank you.
All right, at this time, we can take the rest of the agenda as a whole. Do I have a motion to approve items 13 through 28? I will make that motion.
Second.
Any discussion? None? Roll call, please.
Mr. Kern?
Yes.
Ms. Chesla?
Yes.
Mr. Sarnowski?
Yes. And now, what we all have been waiting for, the official ribbon-cutting ceremony for our brand-new, newly revised courtroom one. So at this time, I guess we're going to have everyone come on up. We're going to push up the, yep.
We're all going to say a few words, but this is really a momentous and great occasion, and I feel a lot of positive things about you on that side. It's an honor and purpose to do this, and Judge Miller has been such a great partner in this whole construction, and so important to all of us here, and a big part of what we see here as well today. It would be possible without his support and the whole judiciary support. Thank you very much for your time. Now, further ado, one, two, three. All right, and so now we're going to actually have some people say a few words.
All right, well, good afternoon, everyone. Thank you for all coming today. First and foremost, I'd like to have everyone give a big hand to the Belvedere Singers and their director, Adam Conte. Good job, guys. Thank you. That was beautiful. So after the last few years, today for me is certainly a day of gratitude, and I want to first begin by thanking my colleagues, Jim and Lori, for their trust and support in me as director for this year. I can't ask for two finer, more dedicated individuals to work with. Jim's leadership over the last year and his management of the COVID response has been nothing less than heroic. Warren County would not be in the position we are in today, which is really secure and great, if it were not for him and the work of the Warren County Health Department and Public Safety Team that headed up this whole COVID response and everything we've been doing over the last two years. And I just want to thank Dennis Riley, Pete Sommers, and Courtney Sartain for all their work over the last two years. They've, they've been fantastic, so thank you all of you for all you've done. It's truly amazing. I also want to thank Lori. She's done a great job as our newest commissioner. She's been a constant advocate for our municipalities and, you know, coming in and taking over our human services team. She put together the very successful Health and Wellness Field Day, which for our communities today, for the people that are out there and dealing with a lot of issues due to what we've been going through, was such an important event, and she did a great job with that and really took the reins on that, so I thank her. I also want to thank Holly Mackey, Bill Duffy, and our entire elections team. This year was challenging, especially given all the new election rules and the COVID that we had to deal with. But the machines we purchased, I think, proved to be the right choice, and that was a lot due to them. They had the paper backups, and we knew that we had security and trust in our election process because of the machines we purchased and because of the things we did in the past, and that's a great thing. That's not, that's something not everyone can say, and I'm very proud of that. I also want to thank all our mayors for their support over the last year, actually, last two years. You know, all the calls they've been on, all the time they've taken, working with the county officials and working with the Health Department. They've also been heroes over the last two years, and amazing group of people who really care about their communities, so thank, I want to thank them. And I want to also thank our legislators, specifically my good friend, Senator Darty, who swore me in again. We got this thing down to a science, doing a great job. Mike's my lucky charm has sworn me in every time since I became a freeholder, and he, and we have a great relationship, and he does a great job, and I really appreciate that. And they're really great advocates for us down in Trenton, making sure that everything we ask for and whatever we're asking them to push for us, that they're pushing down there. And now we have two Warren County leaders, Senator O'Rahoe and Assemblyman DeMeo, who are leaders in Trenton as the Republican leader, leaders. So that just shows that Warren County does put out and develop leadership that is seen throughout the whole state. I also want to finally, or no, I'm sorry, I wanted to also thank my family, who's sitting up in front. They're the, except for Art, they're the only people sitting in the prisoners' only seat. I swear to God, they are here of their own, well, most of them are probably here of their own free will. But I want to thank them for all the support they've shown me. And finally, all of this would not be possible without the leadership and hard work of our administrator, Alex Lorzak, and his whole administrative team. What you see today, everything that's happened over the two, the last two years, he has led this whole group on, and it's amazing what they've accomplished, and truly amazing what we have planned as well for the future, because this is not the end. So this brings me to one of the big things we're here to talk about today, a promise I've been making for many years that has finally been delivered, the renovation of courtroom one. Like I said, there's so many people to thank. Again, I'm going to thank Alex, as well as all of the former freeholders and commissioners and public works professionals that I've worked with over the many years, whose vision is now a reality. And Rick's here, and, you know, Rick was a big part of what you see today, as well as Ed Smith, John DeMeo, Everett Chamberlain, Angela Asturro, everyone over the last decade or more who's sat on this board, had a vision to revise this courthouse, and now finally you come here and you see what it is, and it's fantastic. I want to thank our new public works director, Emily Hammer, for all her work and helping us bring this together. So Alex, you and I have been working on this for the last 11 years. Emily came in, 11 weeks it's done. That goes to show.
I didn't want to be out of a job, but I had it later on.
Just, I'm just saying. I'm just saying.
Can't argue.
I want to thank our prosecutor, Jim Pfeifer, who's here with us today. Him and his entire team are fantastic. We have such a great working relationship with those guys. He really understands what it is to care about a county and want to protect it, and his help with this courthouse. I got to say, the whole judicial team, and I talked about Judge Miller as well, the whole judicial, judicial team has been so supportive of this whole process and careful, and we know in the past it hasn't always been easy. I'm not going to mention any other courtrooms, but it hasn't always been easy, but here we are with a fantastic, brand-new courthouse, or courtroom, with all these repairs that are not easy, and I know you all remember, because I've seen you here at previous swearing ins, what this looked like. This was not an easy renovation, but we got it done, and we got it done relatively quickly because of the support we got from these people. So I just want to thank them. The only thing you see here, we are getting new curtains. Unfortunately, the supply chain with everything is not exactly what it should be, so the curtains that we are ordering are coming from a country that we can't get them from right now, so they'll be here soon. But this is the only courtroom. It's about a $1.2 million renovation, and this is, from what I understand, what I've been told, the only courtroom in the state that is set up the way it is for remote trials, for video conferencing, and the way it is. So this very old courtroom is now one of the most modern in the state, and I think that's something we all should be very proud of, so thank you for everything. So in government, nothing happens as quickly as we would like, and this courtroom is the perfect example, but good things certainly come to those who wait. So I'm going into my 12th year now as a county leader, and there's still so much more I want to do. We continue to reorganize the county buildings and our departments, and it has been a constant but successful project, and I can plan on continuing that work and attracting high-quality talent into the county. And we're going to have to give them the space and resources they need to do their jobs, and that's an important project that I plan on taking on. We're going to continue to work with our municipal leaders to realize their vision for their towns. I think we have a great team in Warren County overall, a lot of good mayors, a lot of good council people who really care about their communities and are very vocal, and we hear them, and we want to continue to work with them to realize their vision for their towns, and I think that's extremely important. And a lot of that has to do with transportation, traffic, and I'm going to continue to push on the NJDOT, to move forward on the projects that we want to see in Warren County and abandon the projects that we don't. You know, we've been pushing hard back on the 80 Rockfall project. We don't feel that's a good one, but we do need to move forward on intersections such as 519, 57, and other intersections along 519, as well as intersections along 46, which we need this DOT and the state's support for, to get the financial resources to make these projects happen, and I'm going to continue to push on that. Finally, Warren County is in a great financial position. We've done, continue to make difficult choices, but the choices that are right for us and our future, such as debt-free governing and voter-approved bonding, and that's why our financial position is strong, and it's going to continue to be. We're going to continue to make sure that we make our budgets reasonable to support our communities and do what they need to do, and as well support our municipalities. Just to close, I just want to say once again, this year, past few years, for me, has just been about gratitude, about thanking all of you for all of the hard work you have done. I know this has not been easy, and all of our entire team. So it's about gratitude, it's about thanking you, and it's about giving back, and I want to just say thank you, God bless you, and God bless Warren County. Thank you. So we're kind of going to be talking a lot about the courthouse, and I want to bring up some very important and special people, so I'm going to emcee this, which is something we usually don't do, but I'm going to emcee this so we can have a lot of people come up and speak. Next, we're going to have our deputy director, Lori Chesla, come up and speak a little bit to you. Thank you.
First, I'd say happy new year, and it is really nice to see people in the audience this year, unlike last year. 2021 was, was quite the year. As you know, as I said, like last year, there was nobody here. We were still going through the ravages of COVID as we are again, and it doesn't seem like it's ending anytime soon. I want to give a special shout-out to Jim Kern for winning his election. I know it was a tough one, but we're glad to have him back. So with, with everything we've been doing, as you know, as we do in our daily lives, we have COVID hanging over our heads, and we really ramped it up again this year. We opened up our vaccination clinics, we all got vaccinated, some of us, maybe me, also got COVID after getting vaccinated, so we understand what everybody's going through, and we've gone through the challenges of people being in the office, not being in the office, but one of the things I have to say first and foremost, as my first year here, is I am unbelievably impressed with the employees that work for this county. They don't let anything get in the way of them doing their job, and their job is to serve the people of the county of Warren, and everybody's doing a fabulous job, and even the new people we have coming on, like Emily, doing a wonderful job. Look at this renovation you managed to do. I think you should be on HDTV. But like we said, we have a great judicial branch. We have, you know, the prosecutor's office has been working hard to make sure crime is taken care of. We have the Board of Health, who I cannot say enough things about. They have been working like nonstop since 2020. We have Human Services, again, who are trying to meet the needs of those who have the most needs in our county with, with all of this COVID going on, and it's making everything even worse for the people who need this, and they have really stepped up to the challenge. We've lost some of our employees, and we managed to get new ones who have, who stepped right in and are doing that job. And as now director Sarnowski stated, we managed through this to finally have our Health and Wellness Field Day, and that was, that was everybody working together, and the goal of that was to reach out to those who, who need us most and show our services. And not only did they do that, but they managed to apply for a grant, and in their first year applying, received over $15,000 for our next year's event, so we're very excited about that, and we'll have more on that. I'm also, this is my first year sitting on the county planning board, and I have to say, our planning department is unbelievably meticulous, which is what we need. Right now, we're facing a lot of challenges. Preservation of our way of life is huge here. We're being inundated by warehouses. We have the state that has now put this layer of solar on top of us, where solar can go basically anywhere. So our ag board and our land preservation department has worked extremely hard this year to preserve as many farms as we could, and I want to thank both of my colleagues for, when we needed to step in at the county and fully fund these preservations, we did this year, because we can't wait, because if we wait, they'll be purchased either by a warehouse or they'll end up being solar. Some of the other things going forward, as Director Sarnowski said, traffic is an issue on our county roads, and we want to keep them safe, so we're doing whatever we can with all the municipalities to make sure that we keep them safe. We want to focus on the projects that we need, not that we don't need, and make sure, again, that we're not, our county roads don't become like the roads in other counties, where you, they're impassable. We want to keep them safe. Another issue for me going forward is broadband. As we know, we have a lot of issues here. We have also received a lot of money that we really don't know what to do with quite yet, so we're looking into that next year. We want to, even if we start with our own infrastructure, to get better internet capabilities and broadband here in our municipalities and go from there to help those that need it most. We have accessibility issues where people just can't afford it, and we have areas of our county where it just doesn't exist. Again, I have really, truly learned a lot this year. One of the things, like I had said, is everybody in this county works extremely hard. Our mayors, thank you for your support, and all our committee and council people. We're trying to help you guys as much as we can. Our legislators for always being there, including everybody who's here today, thank you. Our clerk, Mackey, our sheriff, McDonald, the whole election board, every, every election is different this year and every year after that. Our chairman for always supporting us, but most of all, Alex, for doing everything that he does, and I have to say, he does a lot. He works 24/7, 365 days a year. But I really just, most of all, want to thank everybody here in the county as we try to keep this county the best in New Jersey, and I thank you and hope you have a very happy and healthy new year, and I hope this one becomes a little more normal by the end. Thank you.
I'm glad the photos didn't start till after my speech, because you're going to start paying attention to those that are not made. But I'll let Jim keep you entertained, so Commissioner James Kern. I'm going to be distracted by the pictures now, too, so this probably isn't a good idea. So first, let me say thank you to everyone in this room, specifically the second row. I got the councilwoman in my family's row, too, Jason, so we got, but, you know, my family, my support staff, some of my family not here today. We have, my dad's having back surgery on Monday, so I'm like, you're not going anywhere near people for a little bit, until we can get that done. But thank you to my family for always having my support while going through campaigning, which I think everyone up here knows how difficult that can be. Also, thank you, speaking of my campaign, my awesome campaign team, starting with Nancy Brown, all you do. I know, as we said, wasn't that exciting this year, but again, I think that's in large part due to our county chairman, Doug Steinhardt, who I think, the way our party sits in Warren County right now, you know, I don't even think they want it just to waste their time because of how strong the party is, so thank you, chairman, for all you do, and having support in me and, you know, the different people throughout the county who people throughout the county who build that up. Dale Perichuk, where's Dale? Dale is just the man on the road. He is everywhere, doing everything he possibly can, so thank you for all you did for the campaign. Christine Rusin, Randy Piazza Jr., also, who helped out a lot early on in this campaign as well. My colleagues, Commissioner Chesla, to use some corporate jargon, I'm glad we were able to bring some different efficiencies and synergies to the commissioner board. For those of you in corporate America and know what I'm talking about, it's terrible language, but as far as the technology and what we've been able to accomplish, you know, I appreciate all your support, and I think, you know, we talked about this at the municipal level, and here we are. So thank you. Jason, I know how hard it was for when you started on the Freeholder Board at the time, and just having someone like you on the board when I joined and having your guidance, your mentorship, allowing me to run in different areas, I really appreciate that. So thank you, all you've done, you're a fearless leader for this county, and I know we're in great hands going into 2022. So, you know, when I was reading back on when I was sworn in in 2019, I had a lot of grandiose ideas of what I wanted to do and what I wanted to accomplish, and then COVID-19 happened. And like the smart person I am, I took public safety and public health as my liaison ships. So I was really knee-deep into what was going on with COVID. And, you know, it's been talked about here so far, but what the county staff has done to confront this pandemic is just no short of amazing. Warren County had, during this past year, had 118 vaccine clinics. They gave just shy of 20,000 shots. There were over 300 people who helped out at the different vaccination sites, and those included volunteers, our public health nurses, private sector nurses, physicians, and pharmacists all came in to help vaccinate the Warren County populace, because early on, you know, we were not getting any help from the governor's office in confronting this pandemic. So the county staff stepped up, got it done, and I will tell you that Warren County will continue to adapt and fight this virus, but we must do so based on science, not political science. And the vaccines work, and we can't continue to live our lives as if they don't. So I think that's what we're doing here in Warren County, and we'll be, continue to be advocates for that. Probably the most important thing, however, you know, moving past COVID is what this governing body has done with fiscal responsibility. This does not include our legislators, but while Trenton and Washington spending remains at an all-time high, this governing body continues the legacy of passports to keep taxes and operational expenses flat. The taxpayers of Warren County can be rest assured that we will continue to scrutinize every expense and provide a responsible budget to our taxpayers. Also, you know, one thing, like as you see in this courtroom, is something that I've been a big advocate for, is having a, providing a more open and transparent government. Over the past three years, Warren County has embarked upon a tech revolution with a new website, meetings recorded and streamed online, and increased use of social media presence. With shrinking local media coverage, it's imperative that local governments provide their residents with access to information, and I look forward to continuing to grow in this space. Also, as Commissioner Chesla said, we're committed to preservation. Since 1989, Warren County has preserved 312 farms comprising almost 28,000 acres. The taxpayers are also committed to this endeavor. The total cost has been $144,090, 90 coming from the state, 38 from Warren County, and about 10 from municipalities. So, you know, we put our money where our mouth is, and we will continue to support these programs. Also, going into the next three years, excited about the county's new environmental committee, which has already exceeded a significant amount of applications to serve. The committee will advise the county commissioners and the general public in order to protect and restore Warren County's natural resources and increase environmental awareness, ensuring that both our residents and visitors alike can enjoy a healthy environment and improved quality of life. Warren County's greatest attribute is our natural beauty, and this group will work to promote, protect, and educate it. Also, I know he's been mentioned several times today, but I can't speak more highly of him, is to continue to work with our prosecutor, Jim Pfeifer. Since he's been appointed by the governor, he, we've not had a prosecutor work better with our administration, and I really appreciate that. This year, this board plans on supporting his proposed cyber crimes unit within his office. We will be committed to stopping online sex crimes, and due to his smart budgeting, this new group will be a negligible cost to the taxpayers while also confronting a serious problem in our county. Also, look forward to continue to work with Dr. Austin in fostering a new relationship with our law enforcement community. Thanks to his leadership and past commissioner boards, Warren County College is now a leader in robotics. These new tools, from drones to robots, will be able to use to help our law enforcement community in fighting crime, keeping our officers safe and ahead of crime as it faces. The other thing I just would be remiss, as it's been mentioned, is so many of the local elected officials, specifically the mayors that are in the room today, and this just speaks to Alex's brilliance. Alex, how many days have we been having the COVID-19 task force?
676.
Yeah, so for that, 676 days, our Warren County mayors have been on phone calls with us at all the times, and, you know, you were our foot soldiers in that fight. So I appreciate all the advocacy that you do on the front line for us. Also, I know that you fight, you know, like tooth and nail for your communities, and sometimes we butt heads, but I'll tell you what, if you were my mayor and you were fighting the county, I would not want anyone else. So thank you all for everything that you do each and every day for us. Finally, as I said, again, our county staff has just been tremendous this past year, from our health department to our public safety, to our administration. If all of our county employees who are in the room could just please stand to be recognized, I just want to, you know, take this moment and opportunity to just thank you for all that you do. So thank you. So as we start this new year, this county has so much to look forward to in this newly renovated courthouse. Our bicentennial is just on the horizon, and we have a lot to do to prepare for this exciting event. We look forward on what has made this county so great for 200 years and why it's the greatest place to live in the state of New Jersey. So thank you all, and have a great and happy, healthy New Year. So as Jim leaves with his electronic device that he just used to read his speech, and I come up here with this piece of paper, I think about that commercial with the guy who trains people on, you know, on how not to be like your parents, and he's at the airport and he says, you know, "Does everyone have their ticket?" And they all hold up paper tickets, and he goes, "Paper tickets, we're off to a great start." At this time, I'd like to call up the Honorable Judge Thomas Miller, like I said, who's been a great partner for us. He just told me that unfortunately, when he does retire, his portrait will not be hung here, it's got to be hung in Somerset, but I still offer to paint it if you like. But he's been a great partner and has pushed through some really difficult things to make sure that this gets done and gets done in the right way. So Judge Miller.
Thank you.
Thank you.
As you can see, I'm more of a Jason's kind of guy. It's really an honor to be invited here to your reorganization meeting and to be able to speak. I've attended 30 straight reorganization meetings in Somerset County. The judge has no role, so I really appreciate that, to be able to say a few words. The county has been great partners, so Jason, Lori, Jim, thank you very much, and also welcome honored guests who are sitting in what we call the jury box, although tonight it's, here today, it's the gallery for honored guests. One of my goals when I became the assignment judge, the head judge in three counties 18 months ago, was to improve relations with the satellite counties, Warren and Hunterdon. Somerset, obviously, is a bigger county, more cases, received a lot more attention. I wanted to make sure that things were done equally, and I think that we've come a long way to achieving that goal. I think our bar associations indicate to me that we've made success there, and hopefully the Freeholder Board, Commissioner Board, sorry, feels the same way. I certainly believe that we have. I want to call special attention to one particular person, and he's been mentioned here today already, and that is Alex. One of the reasons why the relationship is so strong is because of Alex. I was the county attorney in Somerset County for 20 years, a town attorney for many years before that, a judge now for 11 years, and I've dealt with a lot of administrators, and you have a superlative one. He is dedicated, energetic, smart, honest, trustworthy, and part of the relationship, reason we have such a strong relationship is because of Alex. So thank you, Alex. I asked Alex for one favor, which is that in New Jersey, you have to retire at age 70 as a judge, and my 70th birthday is in 13 days, and I asked Alex to please get this ready before I leave so I can be here for the ribbon cutting, and he did it. Thank you.
Happy birthday.
And, you know, when you renovate an old historic courtroom such as this, you never know what kind of black holes you're going to get into, and Alex was able to pull through that. I think the biggest event we had was a bottle of Pabst Blue Ribbon they found on the walls, so he really evened it out. The relationship between county government and the courts in New Jersey really is a strange one. It's unique to New Jersey, as far as I know, and sometimes awkward. The county owns the facility. They're charged with maintaining the facility, improving the facility, building facilities for the courts, and the courts occupy them. Yet the court's not really just a tenant in the normal sense of the word, because the courts can require the county to improve the facilities, build facilities, so it's really an odd relationship. We didn't create it, certainly the commissioners here didn't think this up, neither did the courts, and it's not ideal by any stretch of the imagination, but it's a vestige, really, of the old county court system from 200 years ago, and it persists today. I think it causes some angst, certainly, with the county freeholder boards, and the courts deal with a lot of them, obviously. The county freeholder boards have to spend money for us, and they don't employ us. They don't control us. We're autonomous, we're an independent body. So naturally, there's some resentment about that. But I think that we've gotten past that and that the relationship has turned into a strong one, because I think this freeholder board realizes, as I do, that our constituents, our customers, are really the same. It's the Warren County taxpayers and citizens. We all serve those persons. With our criminal courts and probation services, we serve the criminal justice system. We keep your houses and your streets safe. Our family courts, which are the busiest courts, we divorce people, we handle child support, domestic violence issues, child issues. In our civil courts, we handle contract cases and business disputes, personal injury disputes, things that are vital to a society. And I think the freeholder board has recognized how important, commissioner board, sorry. When you service county attorney for 20 years with freeholders, you get too used to it. But the commissioner board has realized how important the justice system is and how that symbiotic relationship between the courts and the county must be fostered. It's no accident that in any community, you see the two most distinctive and prominent buildings are the courthouses and the churches, and they serve vital, vital needs in the community, and there's a reason for that. And both of those facilities need to have a sense of beauty and grandeur and awe, and that's exactly what you've done here. This facility is beautiful, it has grandeur, and it has awe. It does what it's supposed to do, and it's also a link to your historic past. Jim mentioned that we're almost at your bicentennial. This building has been here, or courthouse has been at this location since 1826. That's a long time. And I've been to every courthouse in the state of New Jersey as a lawyer, and this one is unique and among the most beautiful, certainly the most beautiful setting with that beautiful square outside. But I wanted to thank you all. This renovated courtroom's a recognition of the vital importance that the justice system plays in our society. We're pleased today to be able to recognize the county commitment to our justice system and the vital role that it serves for our mutual constituents. We're proud to be part of Warren County's commitment to those goals and the principles and recognition of a place that the judicial system serves in our society. Thank you, everyone, and Happy New Year.
Thank you, Your Honor. We hope you use it in good health. At this time, I am going to call on some people from our distinguished group over here and ask if they'd like to say a few words, if you'd like to come up, but be more than happy if you'd like to just stand and say some words from where you are, I'm sure that's fine as well. First, I'm going to call on our former freeholder, Richard Gardner, who was a big part of this, to say a few words.
Well, thank you, and Happy New Year, everyone. I'm delighted, and I want to thank the commissioner board for being invited here today. This is, it's just wonderful to be in this great room. The planning for this started a long time ago, and so I'm just super thrilled to see it come to fruition, the many hours that it took for the commissioner board and the administrator and the director of works to make this happen. It was just exciting to see this, the number-one room in the number-one building in the county to its beautiful yesteryear splendor is just an awesome thing. And now, being most technologically advanced is even more exciting. So I congratulate all of you, and I also want to congratulate Commissioner Kern on his, I'm just saying, hard-fought election.
I learn from the best.
Also, on the commissioner chair, to Commissioner Sarnowski.
Thank you, sir.
For being selected there. So, you know, having stated that, I'm excited to be here. I do feel compelled to tell you, though, I do harbor some prejudice towards another great building in this county, the newly named Richard D. Gordon.
Thank you, Rick. Next, I'm going to call on our prosecutor, Jim Pfeifer, to say a few words.
Thank you. Happy New Year. It's been a challenge, but we've had a lot of success this year. I really appreciate all the confidence that the commissioners have in me. We have a tremendous relationship. We have a plan together to move forward, to keep this county safe, a lot of different programs that we're going to institute within the next year and then beyond that. So I am very thankful to the commissioners, to Alex, my staff, especially my staff, because we could not have the success in our office without the staff that we have, and I'm very proud of that staff. This courtroom is such an important part of giving us forward. We are unfortunately behind as a result of the pandemic from a number standpoint, and Judge Miller can certainly tell you about that also. But having this courtroom ready and available and outfitted such as it is is going to really help us move forward and chip away at that backlog that we have. So, again, thank you to everyone, thank you to the commissioners. I really enjoy my relationship with them. Thank you to Alex. I mean, Alex should run for president after this. And of course, Judge Miller, it's been a great honor to serve with him, and I really appreciate the opportunity to be the prosecutor for Warren County. Thank you.
Next, we have our county clerk, Holly Mackey.
So Happy New Year, of course. Let's just keep our fingers crossed that we get through this 2022 with no new election laws. That would be lovely. Just give me one, one in my term. And as these guys mentioned before, too, I just want to do a shout out to Bill Duffy, his office. The early voting last year was more, like I like to say, my circus and my monkey last year with the all-vote-by-mail. This year, with the early voting, was squarely on the division of elections, and he was a person down, and he served this county really, really well, and we worked very well together. So for both of us, please keep your fingers crossed. And other than that, congratulations to Jim and everybody else, and I just want to say Happy New Year and looking forward to serving another year.
Couldn't be here with us today, but I do want to recognize our surrogate Kevin O'Neil. He's been of ill health late, and, but we do have Tom Thorpe, who's up there, running the office very well. But Kevin and I do stay in constant communication, and he's doing a lot better, and he wanted me to send my regards and tell you all Happy New Year, Happy Holidays, but he couldn't make it today. Next, I'd like to, I'll call on our former sheriff, Sal Simonetti.
It's always my honor to come back here every year to watch this reorganization. I spent nineteen years coming back and forth to this courthouse. I have a little request. I don't know whether you can work on this or not, because I think it would be excellent to add to this building, to this room, if we could get that front door open. I think that would be a big improvement to this whole courthouse. I know there's problems with it, getting that front door open, but maybe if you guys tried, it's twenty years later since I tried. So, I do wish everybody a happy and healthy new year. Thank you.
Thank you. Judge Miller, you can't retire yet. You got to get the front door open. Next, I'm going to call on our state leaders, who are such great people and have done so much for us down in Trenton. They're starting with my good friend, Senator Michael Darty.
Thanks. It's, I didn't know what kind of crowd I was going to be seeing today, and it's great to see you all come out, right? Who knows? You watch the news, it's, the world's going to end. So, it's wonderful to be here. We can be really proud of the leadership team we have here in Warren County, and I like the message, right? They're very humble, they recognize their families, and they're concerned about the taxpayers, and most proud about doing great projects in Warren County without incurring any debt. And that's something that Eric and Tom Kane and I see down in Trenton. There's a lot of folks who, hey, let's charge it on the credit card and pay it back. So, it's great to see leaders here in Warren County that say, hey, you know what, we're going to do it the old-fashioned way, like Grandma and Grandpa used to do it. We're going to save the money first. So, Jason and Lori and Jim, thanks for that, and I know you have a great team, a lot of great county employees, and so we can be very proud of that. I think, you know, Tom Kane is here today. He's our senate leader, but we have a new leadership team starting next year, which I think is very good for Northwest New Jersey, right? We think Northwest New Jersey, Warren County in particular, is the greatest, great place to live and raise your family and work. And the fact that my former colleague here, John DeMayo, he's going to be the leader in the assembly, I think that's great for Warren County and the interests of Northwest New Jersey, and also Steve O'Roh from Sussex County, who represents the northern part of the county. So, that's just fantastic. Tom's done a great job, but we're going to have some new leadership as well that's going to do a great job as well, and look out for our interests and advocate, right? We're a special kind of people up here in Northwest New Jersey, and it's good to have some of the top leadership. And finally, you know, I'd like to note, twenty years ago today, I was sworn in as the director of the Warren County Freeholder Board, and John DeMayo was sitting here, and also Jim DeBosch. Jim DeBosch here today? I don't think so, but Jim was on the freeholder board as well. And I would like to recognize Walter Orcutt, who I see sitting there. He was one of my first mentors who helped me get elected to the freeholder board. Remember that, Walter? So, we had some good, fun campaigns. You know, it used to be a lot funner, I think, back then, right? And I remember I met Walter. First time I met you, I believe, in person, was on the McDonald's on Route 31, right, and it was a rainy morning, and Walter said he didn't have any money, so I had to buy him breakfast. Do you remember that?
Ask the judge.
Well, in any event, congratulations to the new leadership team. Thank you all, and I hope you have a healthy and prosperous new year in 2022. Thank you.
Jim and I prefer boring campaigns. We don't, we don't need fun campaigns. I'd like to continue. I'm going to, like, mention, but I'm going to call on our state Senator, Tom Kane, who's been, always been a great advocate for us down in Trenton, and hopefully in the near future, an advocate for us down in Washington as well. So, Senator?
Thank you. Congratulations to you. It's an honor to be here again, and a happy new year.
Next, I'd like to call on Assemblyman Eric Peterson.
So, John couldn't be here today. He wasn't filling while I spoke to him last night, and Jason, he said I could have his time as well.
You could have Tom's time, too.
Well, first, I want to say happy, happy new year. It's been a challenging two years, and I'm hoping, as I think everyone in this room is, is that 2022 will be a much better year for not just here in Warren County, but throughout our state and our country. These challenges that we face have really, have really, have been challenging. And I have to confess, I had a little trepidation as I was driving into Belvidere, and I came around the square. I have to say, I was very relieved that there wasn't a bunch of state trooper cars here, and no phallos of state troopers at the entrance door. And then I remembered, right, I'm in free Warren County, where freedom rings, where the Constitution rings, is the, is the law of the land, and it's followed. And it was, it was, to me, it was much changed to be welcomed into a public building, and to have the officers actually be polite and friendly to me and welcome me in. And I want to thank the freeholders for keeping Hunterdon County free.
Hunter?
It's the most important, it's the most important thing that we have, right, our freedom. And so, today, I'm here, I stand in solidarity with you, and I want to congratulate you on what you've done here in this room. Mike and I were remarking about the recessed lighting and the lighting around on the side, and how much greater and more welcoming this room is, and it's an accomplishment that you can be proud of. I have to say, I'm glad you said something about the curtains, Jason, because I turned to Mike and I said they spent over a million dollars, but they put the same damn curtains back up. I said, fiscal, you know, being physically responsible, they could have splurged a little bit, but I was glad to hear you have new curtains on the way. I just want to end by congratulating Commissioner Kerns on his reelection. He should, we should all be very proud of him. He's did such a great job in his first term that nobody ran against him, and that just shows that Warren County is behind you, Commissioner Kerns. You've done a great job. Keep up the good work. We're proud of you. And to Jason and Lori, congratulations on your leadership positions for this year, and best of luck in 2022.
And last, but certainly not least, my very good friend and somebody I consider my mentor, Doug Steinhardt.
Thank you. Well, I was going to say, I'll keep this short, and then Senator Kane yanked that rug right out from him. Well, you know, first and foremost, we are in just the greatest hands in the state with our county administrator and this board of county commissioners, so thank you to all of you for your service. I have had the honor now of being county chairman for seventeen years, more than a decade of which I've served with the vice chairman, Nancy Brown. So, Nancy, thank you. And on the heels of my chairman, Walter Orcutt, Senator, good morning to you. Judge, wish you a happy birthday and a long and happy retirement to all of you, a healthy, happy new year. New Jersey is unique in that we're never more than a year away from the next election, and there's a lot at stake in 2022, so let's get busy soon. But I wish you all a wonderful new year, and thank you for coming out and joining us today.
At this time, I'd also like to recognize some of our dignitaries that we have in the room with us. If you'd like to say a few words, feel free to stand and say a few words. If not, that's fine as well. First, I'm going to start with our community college president, Will Austin, who's here with, here with his wife, Lori Austin, who's also the chair of our technical school. Thank you for being the educational hub for Warren County. We also have with us Yvonne Rittenmeyer, who is our newly elected chair of the Warren County Community College Board of Trustees. From our towns, we have Mayor Joe Kennedy, Mayor Belvidere. Another beautiful room for a Belvidere. Always making it better. From Blairstown, we have Mayor Rob Moorhead. Deputy Mayor Walt Orcutt. Councilman Charlie Macinture. We have, from Hope, Mayor Tim McDonough. From Lo Paklaman, Lo Pakman, Lo Pakong, I used to live there, believe it or not. Lo Pakong, Councilman Bill Wright. From Liberty, Mayor John Insco. From Washington Borough, Luanne Cox. I believe that's it. I'm sorry. Oh, no, I am sorry. Yes, Hardwick. Yeah, Chris Jass. Hey, Chris, I'm looking at you. I knew I had missed you. Sorry, Chris. Oh, that's right. You're not in office yet. You got sworn in on Wednesday.
Wednesday.
All right, soon, yeah. I didn't miss him. Thank you. So, I apologize if I did miss anyone. You're all in masks, so I don't recognize everyone all the time. But, so, that's all we have tonight, or this afternoon. I do, on behalf of Commissioner Kern, want to invite everyone to Tipton's Tavern after this for a reception, courtesy of Commissioner Kern on his reelection. And to end, before we adjourn, we're going to have the Belvidere Singers, once again, led by Adam Conti, their choir director, come up and sing "America the Beautiful."
majesties, above the birds they play. America, America, God shed His grace on thee, and crown thy good with brotherhood, from sea to shining sea. Oh, beautiful for pilgrim feet, who stand in passion's dress, a thorough fair for freedom meet, across the winter breast. America, America, God shed His grace on thee, and crown thy good with brotherhood, from sea to shining sea.
Thank you, everyone. Thank you for coming. With that, can I get a motion to adjourn? I'll make that motion.
Second.
adjourn. Thank you, everyone.